I want to go ahead and ask everybody to please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight's invocation will be given by Dr. Darren McClellan with Fairhope United Methodist Church. And I want to say a few words about Fairhope United Methodist Church. Reverend McClellan, Dr. Reverend McClellan, I want to thank you guys for pitching in on behalf of the community for the water, the ice that you distributed and all the things that you provided over the last couple of weeks. Thank you very much for that.
Well, it's our honor. Thank you. Let us pray. Most gracious God, we thank you for good work to do tonight, and more important still, this work than even how we might feel about it at any given point in time. We're revive us as we are filled with a room of servants who have labored long and loved much and who have no doubt served with great expense of their own energy and time and talent. But you have blessed this city and you have blessed this county with leadership. And so we ask for your wisdom tonight for that spirit of accommodation and grace to season our conversation and to guide our direction with your wisdom in Christ, we pray. Amen. Thank you, friends.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend McClellan. Appreciate it. Just one note, council members, to remind you that Item 10 has been removed from the agenda. We don't need a motion to amend the agenda. It's just been removed due to not requiring council action. The first item of business will be to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held on September the 14th. Also, the work session and the agenda meetings. Do you have any additions or deletions or changes to those minutes?
Make a motion we approve as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve those minutes that submitted. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, those minutes are approved. Thank you, council. Mayor Wilson, your report, please.
Thank you, Council President. This is just a few things and highlights for the Hurricane Sally updates. I wanted to mention again that Fairhope has a 311. There's an app you can purchase from Google or your Android or your App Store. Or you can go to our website under the contact, there's a link for 311. If you have any service needs, this was really the most efficient way to let us know. You enter a ticket, it takes seconds, and it goes directly to the person that can help Please like and follow the City of Fairhope Facebook page. Jessica and Paige have been doing a great job keeping that updated almost every hour. They have updates on Hurricane Sally. And really, the outreach right now has never been greater. I don't know what the views are. I'm sure you can see them, Jessica, but I mean, we've got a lot of people following us now. Debris removal, we've posted this on Facebook and we've done a lot of updates, but this is, basically, we want to make sure that it's left in the right way. This is hard sometimes because a lot of people have a lot of debris that exceeds what can almost even fit in their yard. But there's going to be several pass-throughs from our contractor who is picking up the debris, so just leave it out and you can add to it. It's going to take between now and probably the next six weeks. So please just keep it out there. We ask that keep vegetation debris, like the woody burnable debris such as limbs and shrubberies, separate from your construction and demolition debris. Also, if you need to use your neighbors right away and you need more room, if you could just talk to them. We're asking that you not do that, but if you need the extra room, I'd just say, you know, communicate with your neighbor. That's the debris removal hotline, 928-8003, or you can do 311. This is coming from the county, and there was a post on the city Facebook page, but we want to warn citizens of imposters that take advantage during these times of crisis, unfortunately. No one from FEMA will ask for your full social security number over the phone or email. Official FEMA correspondents will only come from a .gov email address and never a Gmail, yahoo, et cetera. All federal employees, including those from FEMA, carry official identifications. And this goes for SBA as well, because we've heard about some of the scams out there for SBA. Please report fraud or price gouging concerns to your local law enforcement. Legitimate contractors must have a business license for each city and county in which they are operating. Ask to see proof of this in addition to bonding and insurance. Do not pay cash for work nor for advance deposits. Always pay with a check and credit card so it can be tracked and never pay the contractor The City of Fairhope curfew was lifted as of Friday. There are many cities in Bowlin County, however, that are, that still have a curfew, so be mindful of this. We do ask that you call whenever you see anything suspicious, because there's still businesses that are closed and homes that have been vacated, and call right when it's happening, because police can get out there pretty quickly. We are still under a countywide burn ban until October 31st. Residents clearing yard debris should not burn this as it can get out of control very quickly, and water pressure issues caused by Hurricane Sally can impact water flow. The city receives quite a few questions regarding their internet service being down. I just want to remind people that the city is responsible for the power, but you'll need to contact your internet provider for, you know, anything like this. I will say that AT&amp;T's engineering design manager advised about a week ago that their tower mounted on our water tower was damaged in the storm. They're moving it to a nearby pole, which I'm sure is already done now, to avoid this recurring with the water tower. But it will be down and extend period of time up to a month. We've posted this several times, too. It's really a great resource. If you need assistance for damage from Hurricane Sally, call the Crisis Cleanup Hotline, and they have a website as well, crisiscleanup.org. It has the number to reach, 800-451-1954. They can help with cutting fallen trees, drywall flooring and appliance removal, tarping roofs, and mold mitigation. All these services are free, however, services are not guaranteed. There's a lot of people that need this right now, so there might be a wait. This hotline will remain open through October 9th. And lastly, I want to thank again, we can't thank enough, just the praise to all of our directors and their emergency staff, including utilities, public works, economic and community development, parks and recs. I mean, everybody has emergency people, including administrative people, that have been working every single day since the storm. Oops. I wanted to also thank the citizens for coming out for the parade and appreciation for these emergency crews. And I wanted to read this quote from Operation Director Mike Allison because, about our community, and I thought this was really nice. He said that, "In my 34 years in this industry, through multiple windstorms, ice storms, and forest fires," you can tell he was from Colorado, "I have never witnessed the support that I was shown by the citizens of Fairhope. I know that the crews enjoyed the parade, and it has left them with a good impression of our city." So, thank you, and that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. Next item on tonight's agenda is public participation. Regarding agenda items, if you would like to address the city council on Items 5 through 15, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and you'll be given three minutes. Seeing no one for public participation for agenda items, I will remind the public that there's an opportunity to address the council at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. Another public participation, which you can bring other items of interest to the city council. Council comments. Councilman Robinson.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Jack. I'll be brief, because I know a lot of the council will want to speak on the same issue. But it's been a while, two weeks, since our last, our last meeting. And to say thank you to our city staff, our utilities, our police, the volunteers from out of town, and the community as a whole, I don't think would be sufficient, but it's the best I can do tonight. You know, to our newly elected officials who I saw working constantly, to our city directors, our employees, to make these out-of-town utility rescue, to help them get us back to where we needed to be in such a short period of time is really amazing. Mike and Jeremy getting our power back on, you know, Richard getting the streets clean, Pat, your crew helping out, just everybody as a whole. To, you know, council who offered me power and hot showers from me and my loud children and my nine-month-pregnant wife, I appreciate it. Special thanks to Councilman Conyers for his rescue and help in removing two trees from my property that fell. You know, and in times of crisis, you really see the best and worst. People come out, and I just saw so much good around here that I have never been more proud to live here than I have the last two weeks. And so to everyone, I truly am grateful, and thank you for everything you've done.
Councilman Conyers.
Yeah, Jay, you said a lot of what I was going to say, of course, always.
That's a benefit of going first.
Right, absolutely. But, you know, 2020 has been some kind of year, and having Hurricane Sally, you know, here at the tail end, I mean, I think the reaction and the resilience and the perseverance from the people of Fairhope in Bowlin County was, was just amazing. I mean, I am so proud to be in Fairhope, Alabama, and of our city employees, especially the utility and public works folks, of all the citizens of Fairhope. I mean, as if everybody didn't have enough challenges this year, everywhere you turned, you saw neighbors helping neighbors, people helping people. And I just, I hope that there's a way that we can, we can take this, this energy or this momentum and carry it forward into 2021, because I was incredibly proud of this community. And just wish we could do something for everybody. I mean, you guys were amazing. Thank you, city staff, for showing up in a big way. Very proud of you guys. Oh, and also, the next time we meet, Jay Robinson will most likely have a fourth child. I think there'll be some frustrated people if that's not the case, so I'm going to go out.
One very frustrated person.
I'm going to go out with my prediction, baby girl Wednesday morning. That's my call. Anybody else want to make a prediction?
No wagering up here on the dice there, Councilman Conyers.
Just a prediction.
Councilman Brown.
Yeah, just echo, obviously, the comments before. All the directors, city staff, really, really impressed with the way everybody went to, went into action, as well as, like they mentioned, the community coming together, restaurants, sandwich shops, Rotary Club, serving the people in need makes me proud to serve this community. And I'd also like to echo Mayor Wilson's comments about fraud. If you don't have any roof damage and you have an elderly neighbor or somebody that can't really look after themselves, visit them and tell them, you know, if they want to, someone else to look at their proposal to fix their roof, Eric Cortina has mentioned a fortified roof. In the state of Alabama, you have to be a licensed roofing contractor if it's over $2,500 roof repair. If it's a major repair over $10,000, it has to be an unlimited licensed home builder to make that repair. If you ask to see the home builder card, you will protect yourself from fraud. So the, the people will be coming into town now that the roads are becoming clear and the more and more tarps go up. Unlicensed people will be moving into our community to take advantage of those that are most vulnerable. So just do yourself a favor and ask, you know, ask a neighbor, look out after each other like we've done the last couple of weeks. And to kind of echo Richard Johnson, be patient with the debris cleanup. They're coming. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Boone.
Being fifth on the list is a little tough, but again, I can't say how much, how proud I am of the City of Fairhope and the citizens participating, doing everything they could do to make this city back to whole again. And they just did an outstanding job all the way across the board. We really appreciate it. Appreciate the volunteers with the staff and electrical crews, sewer and water crews, they just did a phenomenal job. I want to thank you from the bottom of our heart. Thank you very much.
I get to go last? I tried to figure a way to go first. I can't go by age, younger or older? I don't know. I guess I can go by shortest to tallest. Maybe I'll go first in that way, but anyway. I thank you for the comments. I want to just echo what everybody's already said, and a big thank you to all of the staff from every department within the city, pulling together like family like we should and taking care of the city. I think that we've, we've come a long way in two weeks, in less than two weeks. Everybody has power that I know of, except for maybe a handful that have some issues on their side of the meter. Everybody has water, sewer, and gas, and, you know, the, we could, the streets are passable, some of them are narrow, but thank you for everyone that pitched in. I want to give a special thank you to the mutual aid that we received from the cities in North Alabama of Coleman, Albertville, and Huntsville, and also the cities in Florida of Gainesville and Orlando, and getting our power back on, because that's what's really necessary to, to get our, our quality of life back and, you know, whether it's protecting somebody's frozen goods so they have food to eat, or whether it's just, you know, being able to take a hot shower. So anyway, we really appreciate the efforts of everybody, everybody that serve food, and all the volunteer organizations, the civic groups that came out. I think, you know, most of all the council members covered all of this, but really, really do want to thank you. I thought the parade, the power parade is what I call it, it was pretty special, and sending off those crews that came in from out of state and upstate to, to help us out. So maybe, maybe things are going to turn around for 2020. I hope so. I don't know what's going to hit us next. There's much, not much left in this year, but hopefully, we can keep this positive momentum going into 2021 and beyond. And so thank you to everybody and all the citizens and all the city employees that did their part. With that, I'll close council comments, and we'll move on to Item 5 on tonight's agenda, which is an ordinance to repeal and replace on its number 1541, an ordinance number 1435, and to establish the bylaws of the Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board. Would somebody like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce the ordinance.
Okay, the ordinance has been introduced by Councilman Conyers. Thank you. And I don't see a reason to rush into this. We can let this lay over for final adoption. I did have one question. Councilman Conyers, on Article 2, Membership, Section 2, it says, "A member with unwarranted absence from three regular meetings shall have resigned their appointment." But it seems to indicate that these appointments are made for such a time until they don't want to serve anymore. So if you missed three absences and you were a member for 10 years, it seems a little excessive. Maybe we need to put a timeframe.
I think they intended to be three per year, was, I think, the intention of that.
Okay, so can we just maybe pencil that in? Is that too much of a material change, Lisa, to warrant reintroducing that?
I don't think so.
So I would say absence from three regular meetings.
Per year.
Per, let's say, per calendar year, to make it a little more specific.
Sounds good.
Per calendar year, shall have resigned their appointment. That was the only thing that I found.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll let that lay over to the next council meeting. Item number 6 is an ordinance to amend ordinance number 843, amending Chapter 20, Article 1, Section 20-14, 1, removing the words "except that bicycles may be pushed but not ridden on the pathway between Pure Avenue and Fells Avenue." Would somebody like to introduce this ordinance?
I'll introduce it.
Okay, the ordinance has been introduced. And this has just taken out a restriction to, that you have to push your bicycle. Does anybody have any heartache with letting this lay over to the next council meeting for final adoption? Okay, we'll let this lay over to the next meeting. Item number 7 is a resolution to city council hereby approves and authorizes Mayor Wilson to execute a memorandum of understanding between the Baldwin County Commission, Baldwin County Sheriff's Office, Baldwin County Public Schools, also the Baldwin County Board of Education, and the City of Fairhope regarding the school resource officer program at Baldwin Public Schools. The MOU shall be effective as of August 12th, 2020, so this is retroactive council, and shall remain in effect for a period of two years from the effective date. The Baldwin County Public Schools will pay up to $50,000 per year for each SRO to the City of Fairhope or SRO salaries, FICA and employees' contribution to retirement, health insurance, health benefits, options or payments made in lieu thereof, unemployment, training related to SRO programs, only benefits and insurance. Entertain a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just think that's been a great program.
Sure has, yes. Thank you. Officer Nolte, who has been a school resource officer for a long time, we appreciate what you all do out there. I know, I hear from the school administrators how much they appreciate what you do and what a difference it makes. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, having a motion and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item made is a resolution to award the repair work of channel beams to the bridge at County Road 13 over Cowpen Creek to All Stop Waterproof and LLC, with a total cost of $14,481. I'll entertain a motion to approve the cost.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions for Richard? Hearing none, all is in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number 9 is a resolution to the city council approve Amendment Number 1 to the contract and amend Resolution 3677-20, part of the RFQ PS01-20 to perform professional consulting services for COVID-19 management services by adding Hurricane Sally to these services with True North Emergency Management, hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to execute Amendment Number 1 with a not-to-exceed limit of $10,000. Ms. Creach, would this be you to explain this? Would you please come to the podium just for a moment? So this is not, True North is also doing basically the auditing of the debris removal, and it is not that, correct?
No, currently, you've got two contracts with them. One is the monitoring service, and that was, you know, that was done pre-disaster. And then when, when COVID came out and we were trying to figure out FEMA was doing some reimbursement, we had actually put that out for bid, and True North was the one we chose. And then once the CARE Acts came in place, we seen where we would be able to get 100% reimbursement, so we haven't used them in the capacity of FEMA reimbursement. And so as, as Sally hit and I was seeing dollar signs and projects and looking at staff wise of trying to do all the different projects we're going to have, it was my, I got with Richard Johnson asking, that True North does do PA. We signed them, you know, we got them involved for the COVID to be able to do project worksheets to help us with reimbursement, and that I'm asking here, could we be able to do amendment to our current contract and have them also assist with project worksheets and gathering cost data for this, this storm?
Okay. Not that this is a very big expense, but this would also probably be reimbursable itself, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I mean, and we may have, we'll have to come back to you, because the $10,000, that's what we set up for COVID-19. We've never used any of that money, so this would be that we would come back to you for more than the $10,000.
What would be a reasonable amount? Is there any reason not to just amend the resolution tonight? If you have an amount in mind and it's reimbursable? As Barney Fife would say, nip it in the bud.
In this case, we have, you know, we're going to get 5% of a total of everything that's PA-related as administrative cost, and then they will give, they have approved, we followed the procurement from True North, so that will be reimbursable at 75 cents on the dollar as well. Again, it just depends. For example, one of the things they can do for us, all, just so you know, all that overtime we talked about selling employees, that, the reason we have to do that is so we can apply for reimbursement. If you don't do that, you can't do that. But for example, Mr. Garner, who's with True North, was, was talking about, since he's already doing debris with Crowder-Guff, every hour, including regular hours that we spend on debris, he can get us qualified for, for Category A, and, but it's a ton of paperwork. Now the question is, what, what is that cost going to be? It's going to probably be more than $10,000, especially if he's recovering $500, $600, $700,000 for us. So, you know, if you want to up the cap, I don't think we would argue, but we don't know what that really is going to be until we get into it, and they, you know, they have the.
Why don't we up the amount to $50,000? That's 5% of a million dollars.
Yeah, I think that covers it every bit of, so that'd be fine. Yes, sir.
Okay, council, I'm going to suggest that we say with a not-to-exceed limit of $50,000.
I make a motion to amend to change the amount to $50,000.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend the amount. All is in favor of the amended resolution, please say aye. Not approving it, but of amending the resolution as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, now, to approve Amendment Number 1 to the contract and amend the resolutions and the RFQ with a not-to-exceed limit of $50,000, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the amended resolution. Any discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that, council. Thank you, Richard. Thank you, Kim. Okay, Item 10 was removed from the agenda. Item 11 is a resolution to City of Fairhope vote to purchase 22 single-phase mount transformers for the electric department from Anixter Power Solutions with a total cost of $41,404.22, and authorizes for the procurement using the option allowed by the Code of Alabama. You can see the section there, these materials are needed and used and consumed in the operation of our electric system. So I'll entertain a motion for this purchase.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I will note for the people that may be watching this is that we did cover this in the work session as well. Right here, no further discussion. All those in favor of the purchase, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 12 is a resolution to City of Fairhope approve the procurement of a 16-foot prefabricated aluminum bridge for the sidewalk on Nichols Avenue for the Public Works Department from Liberty Bridges with a cost of $10,158. The project is in conjunction with the Fairhope Single Tax Corporation, who will be performing the installation of sidewalks. Entertain a motion for the purchase of this.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 13 is a resolution, Mayor Wilson is hereby authorized to execute an extension with the Government Economic Development Institute with Auburn University for first phase of the Auburn Personnel System Project, which includes updating all job descriptions, grades, making them compliant with federal law, and more. There is a need for development of additional organizational information and modifications. The new completion date will be December the 18th, 2020. And council, I do want to say this will not reflect any change in cost whatsoever. The old, the effective date would be, of the modification would be September the 1st, and the new expiration date would be, I'm sorry, the old expiration date, September the 30th, with a new expiration date of 20, December 18th, 2020. I'll entertain a motion to extend that.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
I feel like we ordered this a long time ago, and I'm just curious. So normally, I know if you have a contract on somebody, if you've had a very, very long contract, there become, I guess, distancing, if somebody doesn't hit the timeframe and starts backing it down, I'm just curious of the reason for the extension, because I feel like we have had this out over a year, maybe. Is that in my?
Sharice or Kim, can you answer that, or Mayor?
They sent it in on our board review, but they did a lot more work from their progress. There's a lot more job descriptions than we originally gave us to look for, and there's a lot more to discuss. And they have already done some of the structural, you know, that's part of, this is what we're calling the second phase.
You know, I know we've talked about it in multiple meetings over the last year and a half, and probably before then, about needing a lot of updated job descriptions and some of those things. And a lot of these, a lot of the discussions were kind of put on hold until we got this back that we were waiting on. Is there any way for us to get what they've got now? You know, it's. to get what they've got now, uh, you know, is, uh, you know, is that even a possibility to sort of, sort of see what they've got, so we can start implementing this thing, instead of getting everything at once in December and trying to implement it all at once, maybe they can give us what they've got, so we can start working on that and then kinda work it in phases?
Well, when I talked to Mariah last week, she said that, um, she'll have an update on, in mid-October, so whenever that next council meeting is, around that time, I will give y'all what she has, and, um, I don't know, there, there were several things that happened, COVID being one of them-
True.
Um, but I mean, it's definitely longer than what I expected, so.
And their letter does specifically point to the fact that there was additional work and, uh, no additional cost, so.
Okay.
I think that, that sounds acceptable, does that sound acceptable?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, we have a motion and a second, clerk?
Yes, you do.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, motion carries, thank you, council. Item fourteen from the Street and Traffic Control Committee, a request that the city council authorize to reduce the speed limit to 25 miles per hour in the city portion of Sea Cliff Drive, with a recommendation to the county for the same on the county's portion, and also a request, uh, from the city council authorization to place one speed calming device with the correct miles per hour on the South Ingleside Street between Fairhope Avenue and Morphe Avenue to help with traffic. Um, I was not at that last Street and Traffic Control Committee, Officer Nolte, I don't know if you were there, maybe not, Chief usually attends that, RJ, were you there? Do you want to, uh, do you need to elaborate on any of these, the, the, I'm surprised that the speed limit is not already 25 miles per hour on Sea Cliff, would it be in a residential area?
Yeah, and just, uh, we did have a boo-boo, uh, when we had the traffic data, uh, the, the, the traffic data was, was collected based upon the speed limit being 35, and so we thought that, and, and in the case for that data, not that many people were speeding, it actually is posted currently both on the county side and city side at 25 miles an hour, so I know Chief was gonna go ahead and rerun the traffic data, and we'll probably see at the next traffic committee to see if we have a speeding problem, then, uh, the, on the single, uh, South Ingleside, and I'm not sure, I can't, I'd have to go see what the correct miles per hour, but, but South Ingleside, it was the, the opinion of the committee to recommend a singular traffic calming in that block there, so.
Did they have a, uh, was that brought up by citizens, and did they have a petition so duly signed?
Yes, they had a petition for the, the, the properties that fronted that block on both sides, and I think it was well in over 80% of the, of the property owners.
Okay, so council, my recommendation, we could, I go ahead, uh, if, if the speed limit's already at 25, it may be a duplication, but it's not gonna hurt anything, we could just adopt this, uh, as, as stated, if you so choose, so, uh, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion to grant the request, uh, to reduce the speed limit, and also the authorization to place the speed calming device, uh, on South Ingleside Street.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries, thank you, council. Item fifteen from the Pedestrian and Bicycle Committee, a request from the city council support of the expansion of the concrete pathway width between Pier Avenue and Fells Avenue to encompass the current asphalt section of the roadway designated by the white line, in addition, this road choking modification to the concrete sidewalk would also serve to encourage drivers to adhere to slower speed limits along the South Mobile Street area, and to pursue funding opportunities, ESMPO, TAP grant, ADECA recreational trails grant, uh, et cetera. Mr. Johnson, are you familiar with this request?
Yes, sir, in a nutshell, it's kind of two parts, is, is we all wondered, what was the reason for, in the ordinance, requiring you to push your bicycle between, uh, those two intersections, and when we, and that was from 1988, wasn't that correct, Lisa?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine, I was a young man then, um, uh, and, and the best that we can tell is that a recreational trail or a trail system as defined by the federal highway is eight foot or wider, and at that, at that section from, 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 uh, Fells to Pier, it chokes down to six feet, but there's a pretty generous no man's lane there between the white line and, and the curb, and basically, one of the, the ultimate solutions to that problem is to get it to, to eight foot of width through there, but that would require you to, to literally bring the, the, the curb line out two feet and consume some of that paved shoulder, now there's some challenges because you would also be extending inlet throats and, and inlet tops and things of that nature, but I think it's a worthy project to pursue some grant funding, ADECA recreational trails is one of those, that, that would be probably an easy target, and I think there is gonna be a call for, for funding on that coming up here soon, but, uh, just a support of the council for us to at least be looking.
I, I'm not even certain that we need a resolution for that, all, all we need to do is ask you to go out and seek funding sources and find out what it would cost, uh, because we're kinda getting the cart ahead of the horse if we approve a project for which we don't have a scope for.
Well, I don't think we're asking, I think what they were, what their, their, the, the bicycle ped was asking for y'all's support, for staff to go seek potential funding opportunities to make this improvement, so.
That's kinda like a, you know, work session item, where we say, yeah, we kinda all nod and say, yeah, go ahead and pursue it, so, uh, clerk, do you think that requires action then, or do we just kinda, we can, we can make a motion to support it and ask you to go out and do that, but it, I don't know that we have to be that-
I would go ahead and do a motion.
Okay, I'll, I'm gonna entertain a motion.
So moved, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so, but that's not, uh, this is not a motion that, that funds the, the, yeah, okay, so we have a motion and a second for support of this project, and ask the public works director to go out and seek funding sources and, you know, scope this out, so, any further discussion on that? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, thank you, council. Public participation, if you have anything else to bring forth before the council, you'll come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Jonathan Lucia, last name is spelled L-U-C-I-A, 304 Fly Creek Avenue, uh, good evening, councilman, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you in this public forum, my name is Jonathan Lucia, and I relocated to Fairhope three, three months ago after being away from the area for the last 15 years, I'm delighted to be back, uh, close to Mobile Bay in this beautiful city, and appreciated all the positive comments around the, uh, the support of the linemen and, and the city staff, um, I was very impressed myself with, uh, the recovery after the storm. I'm not here to request any specific action by the council, but to bring awareness through public forum to a pattern of negligent management of the retreat at Fairhope Village complex, the new, uh, complex that I think you are all aware of, up to this date, there's been a pattern of nonresponsiveness to tenant maintenance requests, systemic accounting issues, no staff presence in the complex after business hours, a failure to install the planned vehicular security gate, unauthorized entry by contractors into individual units with no ID, overflowing trash with lack of scheduled pickups, and explicitly rude and dismissive attitude by the property management and property staff. As of this past Friday, both management, both maintenance staff resigned due to reported conflict with management, which is consistent with regular staff turnover in all functional areas since the property opened. During Hurricane Sally, multiple units were flooded in building one of the complex on the basement level, approximately 60 hours after the storm concluded, residents were still residing in units with ankle-deep water, with no clear communication or response from management. The fire alarm in the clubhouse went on, went off after the power was restored for 15 hours straight, with no response from management, despite a response from the City of Fairhope Fire Department. I and others have attempted multiple times to speak with someone in the Pegasus corporate office in Atlanta, Pegasus is the residential property management company out of Alpharetta, Georgia, with no response, my research to determine who the owners, developers of the complex are, our means to contact them has not been successful, appreciate the time today to bring awareness to the issue in the public forum, um, I do predict without a change in our systemic improvement by the management, conditions will continue to deteriorate and will negatively impact, uh, the city of Fairhope, the property is beautiful, they did a good job with it, it did meet a, a need for me, uh, as a professional returning to the area, I, I do plan to be a longtime resident in Fairhope, eventually purchase a home here, so it was a good temporary place for me to, to live, um, but unfortunately, it's just deteriorated, and so once again, I'm here to just bring awareness, um, I, I recognize that the city council, uh, there's not any, necessarily any action you can take, uh, I don't think there's any property tax incentives that would, that would give you leverage, but I just wanna, wanna gain awareness, and hopefully, through awareness, we'll get the right attention of the right people so that they can, uh, take some, some necessary action, there are elderly people that live on the complex, and I'm here to speak for them and others, um, who are unable to advocate for themselves, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, I would just say, based on those comments, you know, uh, if, if there's any, uh, staff that heard comments that think may, that, that we may need to address, to please, you know, I'd ask the mayor to ask the staff to address that, and I, I know some of those may be mostly civil matters, uh, you may wanna address that. Uh, Mr. McDowell, it sounds like a lot of civil matters, but there may have also been intertwined, and there are some other public safety type, uh, matters as well, so might just give that some thought and see if there's anything, Mayor, just give that some thought and see if there's any, anything that, you know, you would need to do. Is there anyone else that'd like to approach the council? Okay, seeing no one else, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, we're adjourned, thank you, council.